Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Hall for July 1st, 2025. I ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Baderman?
Here.
Janey?
Here.
Ganzey?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Zabanski?
Here.
President Gunstein?
Here. Tonight, we'll start with our Town Hall. If anybody would like to address the Board, please do so by stepping up to the podium. Please keep your comments to three minutes. State your name and address. Anybody online? Anybody in the audience? You sure, Dan? All right. If there's nobody, we will go on to standing committee reports. Planning and zoning committee chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Gunstein. We have one item on our agenda, and that's the CP 2025-3 Pulte. The petitioner is requesting a concept plan review for the single-family development on 19.75 acres located at the southwest corner of Route 59 and Lake Street. The concept plan identifies 28 single-family lots. The four plans will range in size from 2,300 square feet to 38, 26 square feet with three to four bedrooms. The development of the 19.75 acre property is subject to a consent decree entered in 1997. Town and Country Homes had previously submitted a preliminary PUD plan for Eagle Ridge subdivision that proposed the townhouses on this parcel. As part of the agreement, the parcel was to be zoned and marketed for commercial use for 15 years before the village would consider an application for residential development. With that, I will turn it over to Kristi Stone.
Thank you.
Any additional information?
So this site is located at the southwest corner of Lake Street and 59. It's outlined in blue. There are some wetlands on both the west and east sides of the site, limiting some development potential. The petitioner is proposing to have an access point to the south for a future roadway stub, and there is a connection to Horizon Drive, which is part, is what this lot was designed for originally. The petitioners are proposing SR4 zoning with a reduced rear yard setback, an increased side yard setback, and increasing the maximum impervious surface coverage from 40% to 45%. The applicant is here. If you have any questions for Pulte.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the committee for the petitioner?
Lot C, a park lot, or is that just stormwater management area?
So currently, it's just stormwater. After a project has gone before the Committee of the Hall for a concept, we direct them to contact the Park District to determine if the Park District is going to want land or cash donations. And then it's usually up to the Park District to work with the developer to figure out which site would be donated, if that's the route they chose.
And the stormwater management area between Lot 8 and 16, is that mandatory per our code, or can the detention be used on the back area where it's wetlands?
I think this is just due to the grading of the site, of how they have to divide up the stormwater.
How would they help contribute to the bike path? We have the one going under 59. Would there be something there to help contribute to that or connection?
So this is located, the connection that we're talking about for grasslands is south of the railroad track, so it's a little bit south of this location. The petitioner is proposing sidewalks along all of these internal roadways. If there were ever any connections where we would ideally want a crossing would be further south if we could get a signal at Bay Tree, and then that would probably be an at-grade crossing with a pedestrian signal, in the event that's what we're able to do. That's the intent of having that roadway stub to the south.
Will this need a public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Was this property actively marketed as commercial for the past 15 years?
There has been an active commercial listing for it for as long as I can remember.
I mean, I'd like to see it commercial, but, I mean, under the circumstances, I would agree with this development, I think. You know, I'll wait for permanent judgment until after the public hearing, but, I mean, I think this would be a win for the residents over there for making it residential. It's more of a use that backs up to more residential. That's just my...
I think getting a light at Bay Tree is a very important part of the Village of Bartlett's long-term plan. It allows us to get commercial at the light next to the self-storage, and it gets connectability from 59 to those neighborhoods to ease up on Lake Street's connection point at Horizon Drive. So having that, this first step in doing that, I think we can look at the additional property, if I'm not mistaken, as to put commercial at, correct? I believe that's the 10 acres and, or the 23 acres next to it.
There's a small sliver strip, and then there's 24 acres that's zoned ER1 that is still, our future land use plan still identifies that for commercial uses, as well as the 10-acre site that is unincorporated.
And if I recall, it's almost impossible to get access to 59 that close to the exit ramp of Lake Street.
Correct.
So a commercial user would need to purchase ER, the site ER1 and B4 to get that access, if they were going to do commercial there, to have access to 59.
Correct. There's barely any frontage for this parcel itself on Route 59.
Does the petitioner have anything to add? Any direction you would need from us?
Thanks.
No, just for tonight.
Thanks for having me tonight. My name is Matt Rowley. I'm with, I run entitlements for Pulte Home Company at Chicagoland. Kristi was great. Basically said just about everything that I was going to say. We're excited to present the project. If it's the pleasure of the Board, I think if you're agreeable to this use on this site, I think we would proceed directly to final, final plan, final zoning approval, all in one, just based on the size and scope of the project.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward, and if there's anything we can do to expedite it for them.
Combining preliminary and final is really what we can do. I would still want this to come before the committee, before we schedule the public hearing.
Absolutely.
Kristi, let me ask, how close is this to the storage facility that's on the west side of 59?
So the storage facility, let's see if I can get my pointer.
I'm just curious.
Dan has it? Okay. So the storage facility is...
Oh, my God. Fine.
About three sites below.
Thank you.
What's your timeframe on a development like this?
So typically, under, per the contract, we've been, we would close in April at the latest. We would, we could speed that up if things went well, but April would be our tentative closing date of next year.
When would you start construction shortly after that?
Yeah. We start, we close, we start the next day.
Any other questions from the committee?
At least me to one other question, just as we're talking about. Can we go back to where the storage area was located, Kristi? All right. Going north from the storage facility, do we have any plans for those two parcels?
So the 10-acre parcel, the one directly north of the self-storage, is unincorporated?
Yeah.
We've not, that's where we would really want the signal. So I, last year, I objected to a plan for a self-storage facility on that property because we would never get a signal then at Bay Tree. The county listened to us. They realized that's part of our plan, and so that's something that we would still be pretty adamant about for any development for that. And then the 24 acres to the north is currently being marketed. However, we haven't had any contacts from anyone interested at this point.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So to develop the property, the larger property, or the property south of Pulte, it's unincorporated, so do we have to incorporate it to develop it?
Ideally, someone would come in and do an annexation agreement with us so that we'd be able to have, negotiate the terms of the agreement for the development.
But not both of those parcels, just one of them is unincorporated?
Correct.
So the 23 acres directly south is incorporated into the Village of Bartlett, is currently being listed or marketed. Then there's an additional 10 acres, which is right up against the self-storage unit that's unincorporated. So they, the unincorporated one, which is the narrow one? That's the one that would have to be annexed in.
Okay. And what are we marketing the other one as, the one south of Pulte?
It's being marketed for commercial use.
Okay.
Which if a light goes there, it makes for a great commercial corner. So, I think.
I agree.
What was the last development you did in Bartlett?
Eastfield. Yeah, it was 27 lots. We completed it around 2022. So if you're doing the math, apparently we only do 27 or 28 lot subdivisions in Bartlett. We're capable of much larger. We'll look for more pieces for that. But, yeah, we completed that just after the downturn.
All right. Thank you for being here, and we'll send this back to our committee and then to a public hearing then. So that's all we have under building and zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Finance committee chairman Laporte.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items on the agenda this evening. The first agenda item is a presentation and discussion of compensation, classification, and benefit study conducted by MGT. This agenda item presents a recommendation for the village board of trustees to direct staff to implement a new classification and compensation plan developed in partnership with MGT Consulting. The plan is the outcome of a comprehensive study designed to address internal equity and external market competitiveness with the goal of enhancing the village's ability to attract, retain, and motivate a high-performing workforce. The proposed plan recommends an open-range merit pay system, which allows for a performance-driven model that offers greater flexibility and aligns compensation with individual achievement. This plan also supports the goal of recruiting, rewarding, and retaining motivated, high-performing employees. The new compensation plan restructures job classifications into 13 pay grades across four bands, aligning salaries with the 60th percentile of the market, ensuring competitiveness while maintaining fiscal responsibility. Implementation will be phased to ensure fairness and minimize disruption, with annual performance evaluations driving salary progression. The plan also includes a framework for ongoing administration, market alignment, and performance management to sustain its effectiveness over time. Staff recommends approval of the proposed plan and authorization to begin the phased implementation, and I'll hand it over to staff for additional discussion.
Thank you, trustee Laporte. If you do recall, we brought the compensation and benefits study to the Board back in May. We had our project manager, Katie, here from MGT, to conduct a presentation, and at that time, the Board asked staff to give time to review the plan and to ask any questions. So we're bringing it back to ask if you have any questions and to consider implementation, so I would entertain any questions that you might have at this time.
So when this gets implemented, what will change?
So the change would be, currently, our pay plan is 25 ranges. This compresses it down to 13 ranges. And then also, we were, part of the implementation of the plan is to implement paid time off benefits for part-time employees. Currently, they have not, they don't have any benefits for working or paid time off benefits. In the survey that was conducted by MGT of the other communities, we looked at, there was, they were all over the place. So we came up with a plan to formulate just some paid time off for our employees to give them some extra benefits to working here. We have a handful of part-time employees, permanent part-time employees, as we call them, and they do such a great job for us. And so we just want to compensate them fairly with compensation and benefits. In implementing the plan also, part of the process was, it was a very thorough process, as I had described before, but part of the opportunity that this provides is to give us a classification and compensation manual, which was in the packet this evening, to give us a foundation to implement positions within the bands, a more structured method. And there's a grid and methodology that we would use to implement, to put the positions into the plans.
Also, those employees that were pegged at, under the salary ranges for their positions, those will be brought up to the new salary ranges immediately, and those that were over the salary range will be held where they are now until their merit increases catch them to the appropriate range. So they can still get a merit increase, but they cannot, oh, wait, they can still get a, yeah, they can still get the lump sum merit, like when you are at the top of your range, but they will not get a COLA increase.
How many people...
Oh, I'm sorry. That'll be implemented next budget season.
How many people will actually get a pay raise right away? Who is, like, out of the range? Not who, but how many employees?
The bands were, it was our records clerk staff in the police department. They were under pay, or below, and then... Oh, and then there were two positions in the golf course, banquet events coordinator and... Yeah, and assistant grounds. Thank you. Sorry. I apologize.
Was there any directors or that will immediately see a pay increase because of this?
No. Not, not in the, no, not in the immediate. No.
Okay.
So if they're already at their cap, does that mean they're just getting their annual cost of living expense raise? Is that what I'm hearing correct?
If, currently, under our current pay structure, if someone is capped or at the top of their pay range, they're eligible for a merit bonus, is a lump sum bonus, depending on the overall evaluation or the overall rating that they received on their performance evaluate, their annual performance evaluation.
Do you have a range of what that is?
So if they receive an exemplary, they receive a, what is it, $1,257? It's $1,000, and then if they receive a superior, it's $1,250 for a bonus.
So what's the annual increase in cost to implement this for the village?
Yeah, $60,000.
Total, collectively, with all the employees that are in here, current employees, $60,000. Okay.
That's the cost of increasing the, bringing everybody up.
That takes into consideration the cost of the benefits or just the cost of the salary?
Just the salaries.
So the additional cost is the health and welfare and stuff like that?
The additional cost of the paid time off? I do not have that number.
So 60 grand plus that?
Plus that, yeah.
All right, if there's, go ahead. I was gonna say, if there's no further questions.
I was just gonna say, I think it's a great tool to have and to stay competitive, to stay in line with what anyone looking at our village would see elsewhere. I worked under a similar model before, and it was a great tool for HR to have, so you know, like, what pay grade you're in when you're getting closer to the top. So I think it's great to have, and I'm glad we ended up doing this study.
I appreciate that.
And how long is the system that you've been operating and been around? Is that what we've been doing?
The current system?
Yeah, the current system.
I've been here 24 years, and it's been around that long.
All right, so it's good, it's a good time for refresh. All right, if there's no further questions, we'll have staff work on that and get back to us at a future board meeting, or...
I'm just looking for a recommendation for, if you're, if you're good with it, we would like to start the phased implementation as proposed in the memo so that we can start implementing the paid time off benefits for the part-time employees, and then we'll do the phased implementation as suggested.
Does the Board have any issues with that?
No.
Not at all.
You got your directive?
Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. The second item on the agenda is a discussion
of the addition of a building facilities manager. This agenda item presents a staff recommendation for the village board to authorize the hiring of a building facilities manager, a position previously introduced during the FY, fiscal year '25 budget discussions. Role has now been evaluated and classified as a grade five within the village's new compensation structure developing through, developed through the recent classification and compensation study. Staff has recognized the need for this position and experiencing operational backlogs, where routine maintenance tasks, such as trash removal, minor repairs, facility upkeep, are being delayed or overlooked, creating inefficiencies, safety concerns, and a deteriorated public image. There is a lack of accountability and oversight gaps. With no centralized facility management, responsibilities are informally distributed across departments, resulting in delayed response, deferred maintenance, and increased long-term costs. A concern about the staff displacement, where employees from administrative and public works departments are routinely diverted from their core responsibilities to handle custodial or maintenance duties negatively affect morale and productivity. A 2024 facility inspection by the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, IRMA, identified the need for regular inspections and strongly recommended appointing a dedicated facilities administrator to improve oversight, safety, and compliance. Some strategic benefits of the position include the following: proactive building and grounds maintenance, improved safety and code compliance, streamlined vendor management and service tracking, enhanced appearance and functionality of municipal spaces, and protection of capital assets and reduction of long-term repair costs. Staff recommends moving forward with this hire to restore operational efficiency, improve facility conditions, and comply with risk management best practices. I'll hand that over to Janelle for more discussion.
Thank you, trustee Laporte. So if you do recall, when we did the proposed operating budget, Paula, we had put this position in the budget, but with a hold or an asterisk or a pause on positions to determine where this would fit in with the new compensation and benefit study. And then, I was like, what are you doing? Sorry, there's a little echo up here. All right, Kristi has left the meeting. Just kidding. So we did propose this position in the operating budget with the hold. As you can see in the memo, there's a lot of people that take part in maintaining the building. I personally can speak to the fact that my benefits coordinator, Tracy, spent three hours taking out toters and recycling toters and cleaning up garbage and then bringing the toters back in. It's, we all have to pitch in. We do have a crew from Public Works that is assigned each week to come in and do maintenance, so to speak, but that's like just at Village Hall and the police department, and that's just general maintenance, changing light bulbs, fixing things that are broken or disrepaired. Tracy actually changed the light bulbs in the kitchen because they were out for a while. It's, it's just, it's, it's not centralized, it's not consistent, and as you can see from the recommendation from IRMA, it is a safety and risk management issue. The, we're supposed to be having monthly building inspections. We don't have those. So things are, they fall into disrepair. The police department in and of itself has grown, it tripled in size when we built the new police department, and we don't have a dedicated person to take care of the facilities. This person ideally would, would be in charge of all of our facilities. Now, I do recall that the last time we presented this position, I believe it was you, trustee Laporte, said, you know, how is this person expected to do, like, general maintenance and then also manage contracts and things like that? So we do realize that it's a big ask in terms of, like, this, I don't think we're going to find a person that's going to really do everything. So I think, Dan and I had a conversation, and so ideally, we'd bring somebody in at the lower level, and they would start out with just doing, like, getting us up to par with our facilities in terms of, like, looking around, seeing what needs to be done and taken care of right away, and then eventually embracing the contracts and maintaining the vendors and the contracts. And I think I'm gonna turn it over to Dan, so he can speak to some of the issues that we're currently experiencing. And, oh, and by the way, thank you to Kristi this evening, because she actually went to adjust the temperature in the room because it was stifling again in here, and so she, she ran to adjust the temperature before the meeting, so it could be a lot cooler because we knew we were having a lot of people present tonight. So thank you, Kristi, for that, so.
I just want, before Dan starts, I don't want to wait too long for the contract management, because I feel that's where we're going to get the efficiencies that we need and that, you know, someone's overlooking those as a whole for the entire building or all the buildings that we have, rather than waiting for something to break in one building and then, you know, for it to break in the other, to really kind of give us some economies of scale across all our facilities. Go ahead, Dan.
So Janelle kind of covered, kind of, the way things are set up, but I just wanted, when I first started in 2014, we had a dedicated public works employee that worked here at Village Hall and did the maintenance for Village Hall and the police department. That position was eliminated in 2016, I believe, due to funding cuts. That person actually moved over into our water division, and at that point is when we came up with the idea that we had rotate divisions. So one month, Streets gets it, the next month, Sewer, the next month, Water. And basically, what we do is, any of the requests or issues that happen at Village Hall and the police department, that division is responsible to fix those issues during that month. In addition to that, we've got, we talk about contract management between myself, Tyler, and one of our public work administrative assistants. We deal with the elevator contract, the HVAC, fire alarms, roofs, generators, security. All those things get managed, divvied up between all of us to try to keep track of all that stuff. You have the inspections and the routine maintenance contracts for all those activities. Someone's got to keep track of it. Someone's got to schedule that with, you know, public works is scheduling it for those people to come at Village Hall and police, or constantly having to communicate with who's available that day to walk the HVAC guy around or that type of stuff. So it's not very efficient. We've been doing it for a number of years. Can it be better? Yes, but it seems like the best solution, as we've gotten into it, is when we had the one person that everybody could go to, that, that police in Village Hall, kind of that one person, that person would coordinate. If they needed help from other public works people, they could coordinate that. So it's just like, we're at a point, as Janelle said, the police department has grown quite a bit, and it needs maintenance. Things come up, seems like, all the time as far as faucets out or, you know, those type of things. So if we can get this position, that person would do the day-to-day maintenance, but then also start to get involved in the contract management side of things. I think it would be more efficient. It would avoid, if something happens where a toilet's out in the middle of the day, that's not something that can wait. So we're grabbing someone that's out on the job, doing whatever they're doing for that day, has to run, stop what they're doing, and go deal with that. It's just not very efficient use. So we think we could be more efficient if we had this extra person that could kind of do the coordination of that stuff.
Well, it sounds like the person that you would hire, though, needs to have some of those skills, like, to manage contracts. It's not just, you know, just fixing or maintaining, right?
Right.
Would they also be the person to develop the process for how requests come in, or is there already a system in place for how these requests would come in when something's broken or not right?
We're hoping to utilize our work order system through Open Gov that, so as, whether it's an immediate emergency, has to get done right away, probably pick up the phone and deal with it that way. But if it's, hey, I've got this thing that needs to get done in the next couple of weeks, they put in that service request. That person would get these service requests and be able to organize them accordingly based on priority, is what we're hoping to be able to use.
The person that we had in 2016 had a property management background, and that kind of encompasses all of those skills.
Okay.
What kind of example contracts are we talking about here? Like...
Mainly maintenance contracts. So like, we have maintenance on our rooftop units that we just put in. We want to... We wanna make sure that those are inspected every month and they go through, check the filters, check, make sure things are running properly. We hire a contractor to do that work, but someone's gotta manage those people. Same with the fire system, they've got their annual requirements. I think they come out quarterly to do inspections, make sure the system's functioning, elevators, the same type of thing. And so it's all those contracts where we don't have the expertise to manage that stuff, but we need to hire people to do that and it's just managing those people.
This, this person would need a vehicle, correct? Because they're going to be servicing all of our village buildings and facilities?
Long-term, the goal would be to manage all of the facilities. Right now, the focus would be for Village Hall and Police. So I wouldn't see, they would be able to use one of the Village Hall vehicles if they had to go inspect one of the other buildings. The plan is to be able to have them look at Bartlett Hills, all the public works buildings that we have. But the focus right now is public work, or Village Hall and Police because that's where the need is right now. But, I mean, we need it on the other buildings too and we think this person will ultimately be able to manage all those. Roof inspections, fire, every building that we have pretty much has fire and all that.
Within a year, you would be anticipating that this person would be looking at all the buildings, so that person would need a car in a year?
If we don't have a vehicle available, it's not something that they're gonna need all the time. And I know that there's vehicles here or at Public Works that we would be able to allow them to use a shared vehicle, if you will, for when they do have to leave this complex.
So are we shifting money then from Public Works to this position?
I believe the position will actually be under Public Works still.
But you would be reducing the Public Works hours by two hundred and, two thousand and, you know, I'm having a baby. Two thousand and eighty, two thousand and ninety? Hours would not be dedicated to this position. Two thousand and ninety-seven hours would not be dedicated to doing this work, correct?
That would be the goal. But like I said, if that individual needs help, our Public Works guys are still gonna help whatever, if it's a bigger project that he needs an extra hand or something like that, our still, our guys will still get involved. But for the most part, yeah, right now, we don't have the time for Village Hall and Police. That's, that's like above and beyond what we're currently trying to do. So it's not like, it's just deferred. If we're doing work here, that means we're not doing work on water, sewer, or streets.
What's the, what's the anticipated starting pay scale for this position? There was a scale in there, I couldn't relate it to a dollar amount.
Sure. It's a grade five, so it would be the minimum range is, or the minimum of the range is seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and the top of that range is one oh eight nine twenty.
Back in 2015, 2016, what was the job description? Like, did they only do maintenance or did they do any janitorial services?
They were in a tool belt.
They, yes, they were doing the maintenance. We still had a cleaning crew, so janitorial-wise, that was handled by the cleaning crew. But this person did the routine maintenance, if you will, building maintenance for both Police and Village Hall.
The proposed employee going to be doing that?
Same type of thing. That's the goal, is to have that person doing the routine maintenance. If a toilet goes out, they can deal with that type of stuff. Emptying, recycle, you know, that type of stuff, they're gonna do that work in addition to the contract management side of things.
So the janitorial company doesn't empty the recycling?
No, they do the garbage, not the recycling.
Who wrote that contract? It's like, why wouldn't you take up the recycling?
Right.
Right, rights.
I'm sorry. We empty our own office recycling into a common area recycling. It's like these larger bins, you know, like, like a toter, like an eighty, ninety toter that you have at home, and it's bringing those down.
Down to the dumpsters.
Janitorial service doesn't do that for the recycling bins?
That's crazy.
Well, we do that during the day. The cleaning people come in.
So in addition to the opportunity cost, so if we've got Public Works running around doing all this stuff, that's an opportunity cost. What's the dollar amount that, if we had to tie a dollar amount to all the work that Public Works has been doing for the past eight years, two thousand and ninety-seven hours, what would we say an hourly rate would be? I mean, are we, are we exceeding seventy thousand dollars a year, eighty thousand dollars a year by having Public Works do all this work now, currently? Does the, does the new position justify the cost?
I think if you factored in not only the time of the Public Works employees that come here to do work, but my time, Tyler's time, my Public Works admin's time on dealing with the management stuff, I haven't run those numbers, but
A lot of money.
There's, there's hours there. Like I did rooftop unit contracts and all that stuff. There's, there's time involved with all those contracts.
Where would this person be primarily located? Be here?
Here.
Here.
Basement. If maintenance contracts right now are costing the village a million dollars and this guy gets, or this person gets a job at a hundred and, say a hundred thousand dollars, I would fully expect that the reduction in that contract of a million dollars, the total cost, would go down. If you're saying what is, you know, he's going to be working tools in hand, if that's the case. But if he's just procuring contracts, we're not gonna see a reduction, we're just adding more cost. We're just shifting costs and adding costs, correct?
The added, right, his hour, so his hours of doing the maintenance is freed hours for the water, sewer, and street guys responding to those things. So that's, that's the, I guess, added cost but savings on the other guys. And then as far as managing of the contracts, that's the freeing up of myself, Tyler, and our administrative assistants' time so we can work on other items. So it's, is it added cost? I don't know that we're gonna see a reduction in like the HVAC, elevator, all those contracts. Those are gonna be what they are. It's gonna be more of being able to do the office maintenance work.
But I would also say that having somebody doing those monthly inspections and doing the regular maintenance, we're not gonna be in the position where, like we were, we were just talking about this last winter when the heat was out in the police department and we had to bring in, you know, auxiliary heaters and, and mess around with all that kinda stuff. So I think in the terms of preventative maintenance, I think we will see a reduction.
It sounds like this, if they start getting into looking at contracts, you have a dedicated person, correct, to look at every contract and make recommendations for changes or things to improve or to make sure the contract's being fulfilled properly?
Make that part of his, or her.
Be negotiating those contracts?
With, with my assistance and that, yeah, we'd be working with them. They're not gonna just do it on their own. But we would work as a team.
Have you looked at contracting this out to avoid legacy costs?
I've had some, I've been trying to find towns that have like a building maintenance contract. I'm still working on trying to get that information. Most people have a dedicated employee that's managing those things. They have other, they have similar maintenance contracts like what we have. But I've been trying to find like, you're talking about like apartment management company type thing. So I'm still digging around with other communities what they have.
And this is a pretty typical position to have, right? And when I was at Elmer's Public Library, there was a dedicated building maintenance or facilities manager, just at the library.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Our library currently has one also. Yeah, very good point.
So what do you need from us tonight? Or is this something we're pushing forward?
I just, I just wanna caveat by saying, I think the, the general concern that I see that most of us have is that this turns into an entire maintenance department. And this is just an individual currently. I think if that's the case, you know, I know it's hard to say, but we should review this a year from now or a year after this employee is put into that position to make sure it is effective. The village is seeing a reduction in maintenance costs because if there's somebody that's negotiating contracts, I know your time is limited, so you get a contract for a rooftop unit, it's two hundred grand, you might not have time to get three bids to get the lowest bid possible or to buy it at a lower rate. So I think it's important to look at that a year from now and see what the overall maintenance costs to the Village of Bartlett, Village Hall, Police Department, and whatever other facilities that they're doing is reevaluated to see if a hundred and eight thousand dollars plus legacy costs of this employee is effective and if they're able to maintain it as an individual. Because if it's not, then we have to look at contracting it out. And that's something that we can look at a year from now. I think Renee's point was you have two thousand and eighty extra hours of manpower at Public Works. I think she just wants an idea of what you're doing with those extra, that extra guy per year after this person transitions into this new position completely, one hundred percent. Because I don't think the board's general position is just to add and add and add. So I'm, I'm hearing what trustee Sawansky is saying and I'm just, I'm trying to clarify it a little bit further. So maybe you could just give a little explanation of what this person that's currently doing it will eventually start doing or transition to doing back into Public Works.
Right. And that, that's a discussion that we've had is we don't know what type of candidate we're gonna get. So this job position is gonna be dependent upon applicants, so what we get. We may have someone that's very strong on the maintenance side of things but needs to learn more of the building contract maintenance side of things, or we might have someone that's been like the previous employee that was there that was more on the managing contracts thing and maybe not as strong on the maintenance side of things. But a lot of it will depend on what type of applicants we have. I think we will pursue, I'll continue to pursue what other municipalities are doing if they're contracting out because if we find that that's the avenue to go, then we won't pursue that permanent position. We'd be coming back here, having that discussion on contract maintenance. It's just, I don't have a strong field, the ones that I've, I have to reach further out because the ones that I initially reached out to all have a person. So I'm trying to find towns that have a management company. So if I find that, then that's gonna be something we definitely pursue.
Is there anybody on staff that's in charge of purchasing that is used to negotiating contracts that could just add this to their, their plate?
Do we have a procurement officer anywhere within?
We do not.
Any departments? So somebody, if you're, if you're solely looking for somebody just to do contracts?
That's not what the.
That's a total different job description than a facilities maintenance manager. So I think that's what the, I think that's what we have to know. I think you probably have to go out and see what candidate you could get for both of those and see if you can find somebody that lines up with that. Because that's gonna change the pri, the salary. A procurement person is obviously gonna cost a lot less for the village than somebody who's actually doing the facility maintenance themselves.
Does, does IRMA or IML have like connections or something that helps with the hiring process for this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of, no. I mean, in a, in a perfect world, right, in a perfect world, we would find somebody that has that experience that, like I said, like Dan was saying, our previous individual had, he, he came from a property management position with, he was with multi, I think it was multi apartment buildings. And he was really good. And again, we, we cut that position to cut costs and thinking and hoping that this would, this would be, you know, manageable. But when we built the, the police, the police department tripled in size and we literally have nobody in the police department dedicated to managing this. So Dan will get phone calls saying, the elevator's broken, we need to fix the elevator. We have, we have an elevator, just a regular elevator, but then we also have one in the evidence unit. And that's, I mean, we, we can't have that broken, that has to be, so it's just somebody that oversees everything. It's, it's again, it's a, it's a mishmash of, you know, Dan does some of this stuff and then Tyler does some of this stuff and then we have an admin that does some stuff and we have people here that, you know, Sam, Sam has done some stuff, Scott has done some stuff. It's like just a, just a centralized person to oversee everything. And again, maybe, maybe I'm just hoping that this person exists, I don't know.
Yeah, it sounds like you're looking for someone with the skills to be able to fix things, but then the competency to get into contract management.
Correct. So like ideally, and, and Dan and I just had this discussion today with Paula. Ideally, we, we would find somebody that has like a stronger maintenance but, but can learn. And our staff is so good at teaching, we do a lot of cross-training and, and so everybody that's involved in the contracts. I mean, Tyler's been exceptional at learning and then teaching. And Dan has instilled that in him. And so just by mirroring them and, and, I mean, literally sometimes Tyler is attached to Dan's hip, which is a good thing because he's learning and then growing. So just ideally, that would be the baseline, is to get somebody in that has property maintenance experience and then we can teach, we can, I feel like we can teach that, the rest. When I say we, I'm talking about Dan and Tyler, not me, but.
Alright, so to move on, I think what you need to probably do is just develop a scope of work and a job description and see if you can get candidates for that job description that fits what you guys are telling us. And if you can't, you're gonna have to come back to the board and we'll have to rediscuss a different job description. Is that fair?
Sounds good, yep.
Alright.
If there's no further questions, we'll, we'll look to Janelle to bring that information back to us as far as job description. We can talk about that.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Right. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session. Alright, executive session pursuant to section two C five of the Open Meetings Act to discuss the purchase or lease of real estate property for the use of the Village of Bartlett including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether the particular partial shall be acquired by the Village of Bartlett. Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Yes, sir.
Motion by trustee Dany. Second by trustee Laporte. Please call her on.
Trustee Hopkins? Laporte?
Yes.
Sawansky? Betterman?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
We are adjourned.